Recording in progress.
Good evening, everyone. It's 7:01 and a quorum being present. I'm going to call this meeting of the planning board for January 22 to order. Pursuant to Chapter 2 of the Acts of 2023, an act relative to extending certain COVID-19 measures adopted during the state of emergency, signed into law March 29, 2023, this meeting will be conducted via remote and in-person participation. Members of the public who wish to participate in the meeting may do so by downloading the Zoom meeting application and following the link on the town's website. First on our agenda this evening, we have our administrative notes and we have minutes. We have minutes for December 4, December 18, and January 7. Do I have a motion from the pleasure of the board? Do we want to do these singly or collectively?
I'd like to make a motion to approve all the minutes altogether. I have found no issues.
Okay, I have a motion to approve all of the minutes. Do I have a second?
Second.
Second, discussion. Seeing none and everybody present, we can do this by a hand vote. All in favor? Opposed? Stating? Okay, four in favor, one abstention. No covenants, plans, or releases. So next on our agenda are Form A plans. We have an approval not required plan, A 4890 Plymouth Regional Economic Development Foundation, Inc., MAP 55, Lot 24-1, divided into three lots. Questions from members of the board? Seeing none, I'll entertain a motion.
Motion to endorse.
We have a motion to endorse. Do I have a second?
Second.
We have a second, discussion. Seeing none, all in favor? Unanimous. Next on our agenda this evening are our announcements. We have one remaining master plan listening session that's going to be held on January 26, 6:00 p.m. at Red Brook. All are welcome. After the listening sessions are done, yes, Lauren?
I'm sorry to interrupt you. It's January 29.
It is January 29, and I have that written down and read it wrong. Thank you. We have the last listening session is January 29, 6:00 p.m. at Red Brook. After that listening session, the master plan committee will continue to hold some regular meetings and get reports from the consultants as to the information we've received from the community in order to prepare for the next phase, which is to provide options for the residents to consider. All of the master plan committee meetings are public. They are available for the public to attend, either in person or virtually, and people are encouraged to attend or to provide public comment. The town is also undertaking an effort to obtain the community input into possible uses for the Holtec property, the 1,600 acres, as it's being called. This is an effort to come up with ideas for potential uses should some or all of that property eventually become available for town purchase, or otherwise to help direct the future uses of that, to provide an opportunity for the town to express its interests to Holtec. We have a survey online that is available for people to take, and it has already been very actively participated in. I thank the community for that. We will also be having the first of two listening sessions on February 13, 6:00 p.m. at PCIS. It is requested that you get on the town website, get onto the Holtec master plan section, and provide an RSVP for that, so the town has an idea as to how many people are attending. We already have a very good list, so hopefully we'll have even more. The Manomet Village Steering Committee will be holding meeting here in Town Hall on February the 6th at 6:00 p.m. to allow Thorndike Development to provide a presentation on a potential proposal to seek a modification of the approved Bartlett Pond 40B. This is not a hearing on that proposal. There is no formal proposal presented as of yet. This is merely the developer providing the community with information regarding what they may be proposing. But again, February 6, everyone is welcome, open to the public. Finally, work is getting started on the traffic light at Long Pond and Halfway Pond Roads. I know that that's exciting news for a lot of people. It has been long in the waiting. With the help of the town of Plymouth, specifically James Downey and Bill Coyle, we have finally been able to obtain all of the necessary easements to do that work. Utility pole and wire relocation for the five different entities, all the utilities that are using those poles, is currently being done, and the hope is to have all of the work done and the signal active during this construction season. As more is available, we will keep the community informed. Next on our agenda, the planning board appointment of its associate member. Now, at the recent joint planning board, select board meeting, we had a number of people who expressed an interest in the associate member position, and I want to thank all of the people who came out and who expressed that interest. It is very heartening to see people take the interest in planning, which we on board feel is so important. There were nominations and a split for two candidates, Mr. Bond and Mr. Smith, and I appreciate both of you being here this evening. We did hear from you then, and so we do have a very good understanding of both your credentials, both of which are excellent, and obviously your passion for this particular issue. So I don't know that we need to hear from you again unless any board member has an interest in doing so, and I'm going to open that. Is there any board members who feel that we want to have further commentary from the candidates?
Actually, I have one question and I need clarification based upon, let me make sure I got the right person.
Are you Mr. Bond?
Yes.
So, I don't know if I asked you this before, but I was looking at your resume, and so you have a practice in Middleborough, but you live in Plymouth, correct?
I do. I moved from New York City to Middleborough after 9/11, opened a practice there, and then, I believe it's in 2017, I moved to 44 Goldfinch, a little slice of heaven.
Okay, thank you. That was the only clarification I needed. Thank you.
You're welcome.
Thank you, Mr. Donaldson. So, we have the two candidates. What I'm going to do is I am going to just call for a vote on each, so there'll be a vote on both candidates. Everybody gets one vote. So first, we have, and we're going alphabetically, we have Mr. Bond. So all in favor of Mr. Bond as the associate member? We have one. Mr. Bennett. All in favor of Mr. Smith as the associate member? That's four. Mr. Smith, congratulations. Mr. Bond, again, thank you very much for volunteering, for putting, and there are many other opportunities, and with your experience and credentials, we genuinely hope that you do partake in one or more of them, and hopefully we will be seeing you in many more instances, because I do believe that your knowledge would be invaluable to help the town.
Thank you for your consideration and fairness and professionalism.
Mr. Smith, you will need to go and get sworn in at the clerk's office, and hopefully we will be seeing you at our next meeting then.
I'll be here.
Next on our agenda, we have ZBA case 4148, 9 Manomet Avenue, Peter and Charlene Capone. Special permit required per Section 203-9. C to reconstruct and enlarge a pre-existing non-conforming structure. Good evening.
Good evening, Mr. Chairman and members of the board. My name is Chris Sanderson with Merrill Engineers and Land Surveyors, and I am representing the petitioners and owners of 9 Manomet Avenue, Peter and Charlene Capone for their special permit application. So the subject property, 9 Manomet Avenue, is a small lot located in the R20 SL zoning district, just over 2,300 square feet. Manomet Ave is located to the west, and residential properties in all other directions. Presently, there is an existing single-family home, three bedrooms, constructed around 1935 on the property, and the Capones are proposing a full raise and rebuild project to construct a new three-story, single-family home. That new home will be substantially within the existing footprint of the current dwelling, depicted on the site plan here. If you refer to kind of that diagonal line hatch, that is the current footprint of the existing dwelling. So the new house will go substantially within that footprint. However, we are enlarging it in a few sections. Those are depicted by the brown-hatched areas here, and thus need a special permit. We are allowed by right to do the tear-down and rebuild in the same footprint, but since it is a pre-existing non-conforming lot, we do need a special permit for that enlargement. So I'll briefly touch base on what those components are. There's currently a little inset on the footprint, so we're proposing to basically square that off with a seven-by-seven addition that will be part of the new structure, and there are also two small deck or porch areas with stairs to grade, and those will be used for two points of egress and ingress. So the Capones have reached out to some of Butters on the project. They do have full support of the Butters located at 7 Manomet Ave, kind of where some of those expansions are taking place, the closest point, as well as the Butters located at 64 Old Beach Road. We recently submitted that correspondence to the ZBA administrator, and we also have received some engineering and DPW comments to date. I believe it was two days ago, we submitted a revised plan to ZBA to have engineering re-review that. It was really just some minor comments, mostly related to construction notes, some construction details, erosion control. So we're pretty confident that we will have satisfied engineering and DPW's comments. So overall, a pretty straightforward project. The Capones are really just looking to kind of expand the livable space. The home is outdated, and we don't believe it's any more detrimental to the neighborhood. Like I mentioned, the Butters are in support of the project, and I think that about covers it. I'm more than happy to answer any questions from the board.
Thank you. Bring it to staff first.
Thank you. With this project representing a minimal increase in the footprint, the building coverage, and not increasing the existing non-conforming setbacks, it is within all other dimensional standards of this area. We are recommending that the planning board recommend the zoning board issuance of the permit.
Thank you. Is there anyone who wishes to be heard from the public on this? I see no one in the room. Is there anyone online? Okay, so I will bring it back to the board for questions. Mr. Donaldson?
I have no questions.
Thank you. Mr. Grandy?
Through the chair, I do have questions on the conditions. There's only one condition in your report. Also, I'm looking through the reports about an H20 loading, existing septic tank, to confirm that. So has that been confirmed?
It has, yep. The septic tank is currently located in the front of the dwelling, which is under that brick driveway. So we do have the record plans, and added on the revised plan noted that was H20, suitable for vehicle loads, as it was designed under the driveway.
Okay. Well, that was my question. I heard you said you talked to all the Butters. There's not one Butter against it, right?
No, not, nope, not that we know of.
Okay, because I don't, okay, as always with my questions. Thank you, Mr. Chairman.
Thank you, Mr. Grandy. Mr. Higgins?
I don't have any questions, Mr. Chair. Thank you.
Thank you. Mr. Bennett?
Mr. Grandy addressed my questions. Sounds like you have your ducks in a row.
Thank you. Mr. Grandy also asked my question, so, Mr. Grandy does that a lot. So, no further discussion. I will entertain a motion.
I'll make a motion to recommend approval to the zoning board of appeals with the conditions, including, we already verified the H20, so that is my motion, Mr. Chairman.
Motion to recommend. Do I have a second?
Second.
Motion second. Any further discussion? Seeing none, all in favor? It is unanimous. Good luck at the ZBA.
Thank you for your time.
Next on our agenda this evening, we have ZBA case 4149, 111G Taylor Ave, Bruce Simmons and Joseph Bazanati. Special permit from Section 206-2.2G.2 to allow a new construction with the floodplain overlay district, and per Section 203-9. C to waive the required side setback of a pre-existing non-conforming structure. Good evening.
Good evening. Kevin Flaherty from Flaherty &amp; Stefani. Let me see if I can bring the PowerPoint up here quick. There we go. Oh, God, my eyes are getting... There we go. That slideshow right there, Debbie? Am I... God. Did you want to hit start? I think my eyes are starting to go. I've been hiding it for a while, but... So anyway, so Kevin Flaherty from Flaherty &amp; Stefani, representing Bruce Simmons and Joseph Bazanati. Thanks. On 111G Taylor Ave, they have an old cottage right on the beach in a velocity zone on a coastal dune. So they reached out to us last year trying to figure out what they could do with the property. They're spending more time out there, and space was somewhat limited for them. So to give you a little overview, as you can see on the screen, the property is located kind of right next to White Horse Beach. It's on the farthest extent from Taylor Ave. All the nine-foot right-of-ways, as you know, as we've seen on the beach, go all the way back that way, and they are kind of right across from Beach Street down there. So site consists, it's a very small lot. The square footage is 4,206 square feet. It's in the R20 SL zone. The lot was created in 1931, so they go by the old zoning kind of conformity and everything else from that standpoint. So really, what they're hoping to do is to knock down their existing three-bedroom house that actually has a full basement on the beach, and to construct a new three-bedroom house on piles. The entire property and the lot lies within the velocity zone, elevation 16. Due to those standards, whenever you do a substantial improvement, they have to meet the code, which, you know, a concrete block foundation does not. So they are lifting the house, obviously, to meet all those standards from FEMA's standpoint. So we're requesting two special permits, one for substantial construction within the floodplain overlay district. Anytime there's any sort of substantial improvement in the building department's eyes, then you have to go forward with the full special permit. We're also asking relief from a side setback. We're holding the same as currently is there, but it's just a little bit tight. So we're asking for four and a half feet from the left property line, which there's currently four and a half there, and from the right line, we're asking 7.1 feet. And currently, that setback is at 6.7, but in the old zoning, we should be holding 201010. So just to give you a little bit of a onsite, this is the, a picture of the Taylor Ave side of the house. This currently over here is the covered bulkhead that you actually access, this unfinished basement. You can see there's underneath a little bit of the AC unit, there's a block foundation here, concrete steps, that type of thing. This is the rear of the house. This is the house right here. You know, it's, again, relatively small for what they're trying to do. They were hoping to add a second floor. Again, due to the substantial improvements, there's just no way they can do that. But it will kind of match the existing houses that are already too adjacent to it. And this is just a picture a little bit farther away on the beach. This is the revetment. Obviously, that's been done and kind of repaired throughout the years. They don't, from what they've told me, they don't typically get too much water where they are. They're at kind of a higher elevation up there, above the beach elevation, but, you know, again, a full basement down there is relatively low. So this is the overall site plan that, you know, I'll go, I might come back to, but the only real purpose of this plan would be so you guys could see that we're running a new water line. So part of the requirements when we ask for a special permit on the beach is that the fire department wants the building to be sprinkled. There's really no access for them, so it's, you know, it's kind of our standard procedure, as all the houses we've done on the beach, to, you know, sprinkle the units. So in doing so, we're going to have to run a new one-inch line all the way down, the nine-foot right-of-ways from where their curb stop is, all the way to the property. So you can see it kind of down here, the new water line that's going to be traveling down the way. Part of DPW's comments were, they were asking where the existing one is. Typically, in the situation like this, the contractor has to locate it. There's just, you know, here is point A, and here is point B, and, you know, don't break everything else on the way in. So that's, that's kind of the only comment they really came back from DPW. This, this is kind of just a zoomed-in picture of the existing structure and the existing decks that are currently on the property. The red dashed line that's here is going to be the new real base of the house. So as we can see, we're pulling everything back. There's a nine-foot right-of-way that the actual house is encroaching on in this front right corner here, as well as decks and steps that are kind of really pushed into that, you know, access for everybody on the beach. So we're pulling everything back to keep the stoop, the house, everything outside of that nine-foot right-of-way. We're increasing the setback a little bit on this right property line, and we're holding the same setback as currently there on that left line. This next one here. So here is the proposed house, right here. Again, you can see the new proposed stoop outside the nine-foot right-of-way. This house will be elevated on helical piles to not too much substantially higher than what's existing. Obviously, it will just have, water will pass and repass underneath the house. The current foundation is up high enough at 18.8. Our lowest structural members will be at 19. Like I said, mentioned before, the velocity zone's at 16. Code requires us to go two feet above that with this lowest structural member, but we're, you know, I think from an insurance standpoint, you get the most benefit if you can go three feet above. On this plan as well, we actually backed for the previous owners. We designed the septic system back here, so it currently has a Title V approved, three-bedroom septic system that we're, that's been maintained in the last six years, and there's no issues. So we're going to be retaining that based off just really no, no other room on the site to put it, but it's in good working condition right now, and, you know, has been working fine all these years. So Bill Fornascheri at BF Architects designed the house for these, our clients. As you can see here, you know, this is, this would be the ocean side right here. This would, this would be the front elevation towards Taylor Ave. There's a couple decks out the back here. We're not asking for any sort of relief from height requirements. We're going to be less than the 35 feet. A couple other elevation views. This is from the right side of the house. As you can see, the deck's on the ocean side. So a couple of the permitting approvals that we already have in place, we've already been in front of the Conservation Commission. They've approved and issued an order of conditions. They had no issues with the project, obviously. Getting rid of a foundation on the beach is, you know, an improvement to the whole situation. We've been through the Historic Commission, and they approved the demo delay. The current owners have kept really good care of the house, so they kind of looked at it. Like, usually, they see a little bit more of a rougher shape, but the, you know, they understood that with the full basement, it was what it was. So they've approved that, and then again, we have, you know, the Title V approval for the septic system out back. And with that, I'd be happy to answer any questions.
Thank you. I'll refer first to staff.
Thank you. This neighborhood is a very interesting neighborhood from a planning perspective. There is no frontage. It is a clustering of cottage homes that you see. The subdivision was originally laid out in about 1931, which by several decades predates the adoption of subdivision control law in Plymouth. So what you're seeing here, you wouldn't see this today. With that being said, this is the type of consistent addition or renovation, I should say, that you're seeing in this neighborhood. It is not considered to be substantially more detrimental than the existing structure. In fact, from an environmental and safety perspective with the floodplain requirements, it's an improvement. So staff is recommending that this be recommended to the zoning board to be issued. There are a couple of conditions that we did include, particularly that prior to the issuance of a certificate of occupancy and building, you would need to get the velocity certificate for the floodplain. We can remove the demolition delay provision, as we have heard, and we'll update the documentation in this report to reflect that Historic has already looked at this and approved that demolition. And then we received, due to the nature of the site with there being no frontage, the dense settlement, and you see there's just, you know, about nine-foot right-of-ways, we had a list of conditions that Mr. Flaherty has already addressed about residential sprinkling and things like that that were flagged with fire and code enforcement. So we've just included those as well as a condition of approval here. But other than that, we would recommend that you recommend the issuance of this. Thank you.
Thank you. Seeing no one in the room who wishes to be heard on this. Is there anybody on Zoom? Okay, I will bring it back to the board for questions. Mr. Grandy?
I just have a couple of questions. I can see in the report everything that you really need as far as what needs to be done here. If you can go to the photos of the house, the existing house for me?
This is the...
The first one.
Yeah, this is the first, this is the front towards the Taylor Ave.
Right. Can you tell me where is elevation 16 on the existing home?
So I can tell you that the top of foundation right here is at elevation 18.8 currently right now. So 16 would be roughly the ground, and, you know, as it varies with the sand going around the house, basically at the elevation, you know, of where the finished grade is.
Right. And the velocity zones are adjusted yearly, or are they adjusted semi-annually?
No, they're, they're adjusted kind of in a cycle. So it's when they come through, they've changed, you know, so going back maybe even less than 10 years, there was a different elevation on the beach in some locations. Then when they do a new study, there may be an adjustment based off this, that, whatever the data. A lot of it's done from, you know, Texas, so they'll make decisions based off mapping and topography and that type of thing. And if, and if, again, if, if it was a situation where we thought it was an incorrect velocity zone, you can file a LOMA, which is a letter of map amendment, to adjust that based off the actual elevations on the ground.
And the code you just said earlier was, they like to have the top of the footings on the helicule piers, three feet above the velocity zone.
So, so Velocity says that the lowest structural member must be two feet above that velocity zone. So we have to be a minimum of six, a minimum of 18, excuse me.
But you want an extra foot.
So a foot would help then, again, with the changing of everything else like that. You know, you wouldn't want to put something at 18.05 or something along those lines. And again, if the clients could get an insurance benefit from doing so, and that's a little bit outside of my purview, but again, if they can benefit from that, then it's, it's all the same. And again, the current foundation is only two-tenths lower than where we're proposing that lowest structural member be. So it really won't change any aesthetics of the lot.
And the houses around it, are they on piers?
Yeah. Every, you know, every house that you've seen kind of improved, I don't know if you can see this, see how this is elevated here? I mean, it's not, we're not talking about six-foot elevation, you know.
I wanted to bring it up so everybody can see how, how the houses are raised, the newer ones.
Right. So and again, as you move through the beach, that's just where they're going, because, you know, they cross, it's not hard to cross over 50% of that, you know, the value of the actual structure, not the property, when they're doing improvements. So whenever you cross over that threshold, that requires full compliance with FEMA.
Okay. Appreciate it. Thank you very much for your answer. Thank you, Mr. Chairman.
Thank you, Mr. Grandy. Mr. Bennett?
Two small questions, Kevin. The septic system, is that just a conventional system there?
Yes, that was just done. They had cesspools back in 2000. I think it was 16 when we designed it. It actually was installed in 2018. So it's just a 1,500-gallon poly tank with chambers.
Thanks. And the other question is, I see... And the other question is, I see in the recommended, or the draft approval, the, the conditions that a, um, a late filing fee will be required for, for double the permit fee. Was that, is that perhaps a typo or a carryover from something else? Has work started?
No.
That's, that's the next one.
That may be the next case.
That's the next case.
My mistake. No further questions then.
Thank you. Mr. Higgins.
I don't have any questions. Thank you, Mr. Chair.
Mr. Donaldson.
The abutters, I didn't, we didn't hear anything in regards to the abutters approving the project, liking the project or anything like that. Do you have any of that information? I don't, I didn't see, also see it in the packet.
So, we submitted, I think, six letters so far, and what the email I received today, six, four, somewhere between four and six already. And there was supposed to be another five or six coming per the client's kind of, we kind of sent them out, again, with zoning board of appeals with a real basic template of if you can say that this is going to be improving the neighborhood and that type of thing, and they don't have any issues. So, you know, four or five came back already. Some from just around the area think there was one, the diers were rated adjacent to the property. So, there's been no opposition to it, to my, to my knowledge at this point.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. That's all I have.
Thank you. I have no further questions. Everything I need to, has been answered. I'll entertain a motion.
A motion to approve or recommend approval.
I have a motion to recommend.
I'll second that.
And a second. Further discussion? Seeing none. All in favor? It is unanimous.
Thank you.
Good luck at the ZBA. Next on our agenda is ZBA case 4150, 108 Buzzards Bay Drive, Helmsum Diaz. Special permit required per section 203-9.C to expand a pre-existing non-conforming single-family house and waive required setback to allow a post facto addition. Do we have anyone here for the petitioner?
We do not.
Okay. I will bring it to staff then first.
Thank you. So, this is a post facto addition. There was a, as the applicant is referring to it, a shed. It is an attached shed. It does have a foundation added to the side of the property. We don't have documentation to our knowledge, but we do have a concern that this was brought to the building department's attention by an abutter that may have an issue with this. So, we do, you know, while the staff recommendation has issued a tentative recommendation for this to move forward, it is strongly recommended that the opinion of the abutters, as may be expressed at the zoning board's public hearing, be heard. We do have a confirmation that the applicant plans to attend the zoning board hearing on this matter, though they were not responsive to the request to attend to the planning board version. I will say that in, in past instances, as, in addition of the size that has been a post facto, has been recommended to move forward. However, it is quite close to the lot line. It is 2.3 foot from the side yard setback, and, you know, the, the required in this area would be 10 feet. So, it is quite close to that lot line. We would recommend, if you do proceed with recommending an approval for this to the zoning board, that the Conservation Commission is looking for some additional information in terms of how close this proposed construction or existing construction is to the nearest wetland resource area, that a filing with the Conservation Commission may be required, but there's not sufficient information to make that determination at this time. And then, prior to issuance of a zoning permit to move forward with the permitting of this post facto, the public works comments that have been provided would need to be addressed to the satisfaction of the building commissioner. Any evidence of back taxes and payments owed to the town would be filed. And then, since this is a late filing fee, it would be up to double the permit fee as with any post facto. I'll turn it back to the board.
Thank you. Since there's no one to ask questions of, I will open this up instead for comment and Mr. Donaldson.
So, looking at this, I had a, a lot of issues in regards to, first, the, it's been brought to our attention from a, a abutter. It's close to the abutters line, and just looking off of the pictures, it seems to be newer and built than later on in the, uh, later on from the house being built. So, I had some serious questions for the, the homeowner, and they're not here, and that is also a little disturbing to me, so I am not in favor.
Thank you. Mr. Higgins.
I share Mr. Donaldson's concerns, and looking at these photographs, it's very clear that a concrete foundation was poured, and I believe I observed what appears to be a water heater inside there. This is, in my view, not a shed by any stretch of the imagination, but rather an extension of a home, and I am not in favor of it.
Thank you. Mr. Bennett.
Yes, echoing the, my colleagues' concerns, one of my own is that there's a ZBA petition plot plan filed on here by Webby Engineering Associates, signed and sealed by Joseph Webby. There's a lance of air, however, there's a note on the plan that says, "Existing dwelling location taken from final as-built plan on file, the town of Plymouth Building Department." So, in other words, in preparation, this plan, he didn't survey it. So, I would strongly encourage the building department to reject the plan. Concerned, Mr. Webby felt comfortable putting his professional stamp on it. So, that's my, one of my primary concerns, along with, it just seems like a pretty egregious encroachment into the setback. It's right up to the property line, looking at the, the GIS photo. I suspect that that 2.3 feet shown in the plot plan may not be accurate. I'd like to see a surveyed plot plan before I were comfortable recommending approval. So, those, those are my comments.
Thank you. Mr. Grandy.
Okay, I have questions for staff. The owner of this property couldn't make the meeting or said he would not attend because he doesn't want to attend the planning board meeting?
The owner of the property was notified twice by the zoning administrator and did not respond, and also did not respond to a phone call from Mr. Hartman.
Hmm. And I believe the same as Mr. Bennett, that who's to say that two foot three is actually correct, since it really wasn't surveyed? And this is, is it a shed? You can't go into it and really look at it. Is there an entrance into the house from this particular, inside this unit? So, there are a lot of questions that we can't have answered here this evening because the owner's not here. So, I would not be comfortable in recommending to the zoning board to allow this to happen without a lot more information. Thank you, Mr. Chairman.
Thank you, Mr. Grandy. I went out to the site. I did not do a full walkthrough, even though state law actually permits us to enter any property. Then, we're allowed, that's considered for us to do our job nonetheless, but I did take a look. And again, if I'm basing it on where the tree line was from the neighbors, it looks like it's right on the line. 2.3 could be 1.2 for all I know. I also noted that the explanation contained in the narrative from the applicant petitioner wasn't particularly good. I note, it says, "My plans are to add a 10-by-12 addition to the side of the home. I did not originally apply for a permit because it was going to be a shed that was under the square footage requirement that is necessary to pull a permit." Square footage requirement to pull a permit is 100 square feet, 10 by 10. He was planning on building something 10 by 12. So, he was already acknowledging that I was planning on building something that I needed a permit for regardless. I then note that the structure that was built is 10 by 21. Now, unless I'm remarkably dyslexic, that 10, that 12 is not a 21, and I can tell you having looked at it, it's a 21, not a 12. At the same time, as was pointed out, this individual knows better. He is both a licensed builder and a licensed construction supervisor, according to the licenser, Board of Licensor here in Massachusetts. So, under those circumstances, this was not an accident that someone should not have been aware of. That plus the seeming lack of cooperation in answering a lot of these questions raises even more red flags for me, on top of everything else that my fellow board members have said. And so, I join in all of their sentiments. With that in mind, I will entertain a motion.
I'll make a motion to recommend denial.
Second?
I have a motion and a second to recommend denial of this to the ZBA. Any further discussion?
And that's based on all the concerns and questions that we had here this evening, right?
The current concerns and questions that we have and the fact that none of them have been answered.
Correct.
And the application before us is presented.
The application before us and the information presented. Any further discussion? Seeing none, I will call for a vote. All in favor of recommending denial? That is unanimous. The planning board advises the ZBA not to grant this particular petition. That is the end of our scheduled agenda for the evening. Is there anything further from members of the board? Seeing nothing, do I have a motion to adjourn?
Excuse me, Mr. Chair. Do you want to, there, is there any updates or information for the public that you wanted to share?
I think everything was done.
Everything was done earlier. Okay, just double checking. Thank you. In that case, I would like a motion, a motion to adjourn, please.
I have a motion to adjourn.
Second.
Second. All in favor? This meeting is adjourned. Thank you all very much.